Hello. Alrighty. Hi, I see some of my current students here, so I'm saying hello and welcome to some new students I'm seeing pop up as we go. Hi there, so nice to meet you. Hi. Wonderful. I'm gonna give a couple more minutes until 7:05 and then we'll get started. If you have some stragglers, but this is so exciting. Thank you guys so much. It's great. Let me see. Let me go back. Um. Give it another minute. Thank you all for sharing your Thursday with me. Before we get started, I'd love to know where, I know I know a couple of you, but if you want to put in the chat, maybe your instrument or something fun about yourself or what high school you go to, I'd love to share. I'd love to know who I have the pleasure chatting with today. If I haven't met you already, or if you, I do know you already, can say hello, feel free to do so in the chat before we get started. Hi, hello. Oh, very nice. Oh, so cool. I love violin. Some of my other students note too. So awesome. So exciting. One more minute. Really, really cool. See, very awesome. Alrighty, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. If we have any stragglers come in, we'll catch them up as we go. But thank you guys so much for coming to my workshops today. If I don't know you already, my name is Ariana. I've been a tutor with Wise Aunt since October of 2020. I teach a variety of subjects. But AP Theory is definitely one of my favorites. I love talking about theory, especially sight singing. I think it is a really characteristic part of this exam because it's really unlike anything else you see in any other AP coursework. If you're currently taking an AP class, you'll know that the sight singing portion of the exam, although it's small, it's significant and it's really unlike anything other. So I think it's really important to discuss and I think it's a great space for students to showcase their strengths and their musicianship. So I was in your shoes. I was an AP Music Theory student myself. I took the exam in 2015. So I know what you're feeling. I know what you're going through. I applaud you for taking this workshop today and looking to improve your skills. And I graduated with a vocal performance degree and a psychology degree and a Spanish minor from Providence College in 2019. So I love theory. I love sight singing. I think your training is so important. So I'm so thankful, huge thanks to Cora and Wise Aunt for giving me this opportunity to share this with you all today. And thank you for sharing a little bit about yourselves if you did so. So let's get into our goals for today. So here, is it there we go? Okay. So I have three main takeaways that I would love for everyone to glean from this workshop today. My first is that big timer you see in the middle, that 75 second preparation window. That's probably the overwhelming, scariest part of this portion of the exam, right? That 75 seconds is going to fly by and you have only that window of time to prepare. It can be, oh my gosh, I'm thinking about how do I analyze that progression in the multiple choice or I'm thinking about my next exam. There's lots going on, but we're gonna tackle that today and come up with a formula so you feel best prepared to succeed and you go in with strategy. To that point, my next goal is for you to identify common patterns in the examples from College Board. The more you practice these examples and the more we begin to look at them from a different lens, the easier they're gonna become. There's definitely, College Board wants you to put on your theory cap and put on your musicianship cap and combine them together. That's really what this portion of the exam is all about. So when we go and analyze these examples today and really break them down and see what they're trying to get at, my goal for you is that when you go into the exam, you can recognize these patterns. So when you do use that formula that we talk about, you're gonna feel so much better about it. And my last goal for you all today, if not the most important, is confidence. Like I said earlier, this portion of the exam is really about showing your strengths and their musicianship. Your AP students, you took AP Music Theory, it just is a true testament to how dedicated you to music you are and how dedicated of a student you are. Regardless of the reason why you were taking this course, you came to class today, you showed up to pursue this course and that just shows your strengths and how important music is to you. So we're gonna really make sure that shines in this portion of the exam and for you to be successful. So those are my three takeaways for you all today. But before we do that, I'm gonna take a quick survey of the room. We're gonna do a little poll. I would love to know what everyone's biggest concern is or maybe biggest goal they would like to work on in sight singing is. Maybe it's, you know, approaching a minor example. Maybe it's approaching an example in a different class than you're used to reading in your instrument. When I was a student, for me personally, it was the idea of not knowing what to expect, right? The fear of expectation and not knowing, thinking, oh my gosh, what if a curveball is thrown my way and I'm not ready for it? That was my biggest fear as a student. So I'd love to know where, how everyone's feeling about this portion of the exam. What would we like to, what would be most productive and most beneficial for you all? Leaps other than 135, totally. That's absolutely valid, right? When we see those leaps on the paper, they can be, yes, thank you, yes, absolutely. When we see them on the page, it can be super intimidating, right? And how we internalize that pitch as singers, it's a scary thing for sure. Yeah, and I totally agree with you. So I really think identifying those patterns today, oh, where goes, sorry about that. I think identifying those patterns is really gonna help. There is my little poll there for you, but we already got to that part. Anything else? What do we use to sing? Do we recommend solfège? Oh, great question. I love this question. And my students know that I love this question too. I'm going to get to that in a minute, but I will say we can use both. Today, we will use both. I will demonstrate in both. If people are used to using one or the other, I'm going to demonstrate using a neutral syllable, do based minor and then la based minor and then just solfège and major, obviously. So I will demonstrate all three for everyone so you can get an idea of what to use. Yes, I see your question. I'm gonna answer that next. So in regards to tempo, but for solfège, as long as you have a plan for what you choose to use, that's totally okay with me throughout this workshop, on the exam, in your practice. Have a strategy and a plan in mind because if you go into the exam thinking you're gonna use a neutral syllable and then you walk in and think, oh, this exam looks easy. I mean, this example looks easy. I don't think I'm gonna use it. That all that preparation that you've been working so hard on goes out the window. So I'm a firm advocate of using whatever is best for you and what is most comfortable for you. But as long as you have a plan for either one. And then in regards to, I have a question that is, are we allowed to go at whatever tempo you want on the actual test? Great question. I would recommend going at a slower pace. You wanna go a little bit slower than you think. Most likely, the examples on the exam are gonna say at a moderate tempo. But what's most important is strength and confidence in what you're singing and also pitch and rhythmic accuracy. So go at a slow and steady tempo that works best for you. I hope that answers your question. Any additional questions before we dive into our first example that I can answer for you? Take another quick minute in the chat if any comes up. Feel free to ask me. I'll be kinda scanning the chat as we go along. But we're gonna dive into our first example. So here is our first one. So this is taken straight from a prior exam. And what we're gonna do with this very first example is we're just gonna look at it as we normally would. We're not gonna implement our strategy just yet. We're not gonna get into diving into our formula. We're just gonna check in with where we're at today. So I am going to give everyone a starting pitch. If you're not on mute already, as much as I would love to hear everyone's lovely voices for practicality purposes, we're just gonna keep everyone on mute. I will remain not on mute and demonstrate for you. However, sing to yourself. I'm sure it'll be absolutely lovely and wonderful. But we're gonna go through and sing this example. We're not gonna do a real time 75 seconds just yet. I'm gonna set my timer for two minutes. And I want everyone to just look at this as they normally would and then we'll give it a go. So your starting pitch is an F. So I don't know if everybody can hear that. You can put it in the chat if you can't hear me or you need to play it again. That's our starting note. And two minutes starts now. We have another minute or so. Take a final look, whatever you need to. Here's your starting pitch. One more minute. Quickly before we start, I got a question. Do slurs matter when singing? Great question. Details are definitely of importance, but just think about singing more in a legato, smooth and connected style if you can. So we have about 30 seconds left. Here's your starting note. Alrighty, that is the end of our two minutes. Oops. So here's our starting note. One time. We are in F minor. I'm gonna demonstrate on a neutral syllable. Follow along with me. I'll count us in. One, two, three, four, five, six. How'd we do our first run through of the day with just looking at it on our own? How are we feeling? Tell me what you're thinking. What were the trouble spots for us? What felt really good? Tell me everything. How are you feeling? For me, it's probably the accidental, so it's E naturals, right? I don't know if anyone else feels that way. Let me see. Oh, yay. Awesome. I got it right. Yes, awesome. So that's great. It was okay. Pitch was wrong in the accidentals and the B flat to G leap. Yes, and the D to B flat leap. Absolutely. Those are really tough parts for sure. Beginning and the ending were good. The rhythm in the middle was a little tough. Definitely agree. It was a really complex rhythm in there for sure. Thank you guys for sharing. That's totally valid. So now that we have it in mind, let's break down how we can best prepare. So if, when we go to the example, we're ready to go with all those things. So my formula for using your 75 second preparation window in the best possible way you can is as follows. First things first, you're gonna look at your key signature. I like to call the very first note and the very last note of our example our lighthouses. They are going to be the ones that if you get lost in any way, they bring you home. They're exactly where you need to be. If you get lost, you keep on going and you return to your tonic pitch. Those two tonic pitches at the beginning and the end of your example, those are going to be your key indicators of the modality you're working in. So accidentals are a large contributor of key signature as we know, right? Our leading tone, scale degree seven, definitely huge key indicator of minor. But not always, as we're gonna see in another example later, an accidental does not automatically parallel itself with minor. So using the very first note and the very last note are going to be very essential in determining your key. In addition to your key signature. Second thing, rhythm, as was so nicely pointed out, we have that complex rhythm in measure two. That those especially really fast, complex systems that have maybe an eighth note where we wouldn't expect it or a dotted rhythm that comes out of nowhere in a measure. I think it's very important to count out rhythm ahead of time. I think if you separate rhythm and melody before putting them together, it will be, you'll feel a lot more prepared, especially if it's more of a complex meter. So that is the second portion of my formula personally. Another key component of rhythm is the very last note. Looking at the very last note for them is very important. We wanna make sure we're holding that note for its full rhythmic value. We wanna make sure we're getting all the points for every single space that each note holds. So we wanna make sure we're holding everything to its fullest extent. So we're getting full credit. Step number three, melody. It's highlighted because that's where we're going to be focusing the most on today. Looking at melodies and those leaps like was mentioned in the chat, navigating those big leaps and navigating how to place those accidentals internally in our pitch. They're super tricky to internalize for sure. So when we look at them with a different lens and analyze them in a different way, I think we're gonna really see where these patterns are coming from. So melody is where I want you to spend the most of your time. Melody is key and it's essential for maintaining that pitch that was also mentioned in the chat. The last thing is details. There was a question about slurs and how the significance of slur is in singing. Absolutely. That's definitely a key part of the details portion of the example. This is really the finishing touches. Once you feel confident in your rhythm and your melody and your key signature, that's when you can go back and do a final scan of everything. Look for dynamic changes that we wanna exaggerate for our listener. You wanna look for tempo as mentioned. We wanna go at a tempo that we feel confident in to sing, but you could note it, notice it. And if you would like to go ahead and apply that tempo, go ahead. And any other stylistic markings that could come across the example. And then that should equal about 75 seconds. So I've outlined how long I feel each step should be focused on, but the timing for these steps are pretty fluid. If you are someone who's really strong in rhythm and you don't wanna spend as much time on rhythm and really wanna focus on those big leaps and pitches, that is okay. If you are the kind of person who just wants to do a last five minute, five second scan on the details, that's totally okay too. But I think going in this exact order will be really important. I have a triangle image next to our steps here because I know when I was a student in English class, we always talked about when you write an introductory paragraph, you always write it like an inverse triangle. You start with a really, really big details, your introductory information, and then you go further, further, narrower, narrower, narrower until your topic sentence. So you go from general to specific. And this kind of imagery is what I want you to keep in mind when you're approaching these examples. I want you to start with a big scan, really looking for every single potential thing in each step. And then as you go down this ladder here is when you're gonna get more specific. Does that make sense? Anything I can clarify with this formula before we kinda take a deeper dive into this example? Any questions about that at all? Kinda makes sense? Awesome, awesome. Alrighty, so let's apply our formula to the first example. So step one key, I'm taking a look. I notice that I'm starting and ending with F. I know that my potential options could be A flat major or F minor, but my two lighthouses at the very beginning, at the very end, are showing me that my tonic is F. I do have some accidentals. I have raising the leading tone, E natural, also a big indicator. But we know that those two S at the beginning and the end, starting and ending with the same pitch are going to tell us our key. Check. Rhythm. It was mentioned in the chat earlier, that really complex rhythm in measure two, right? Super tricky system there. So when I'm scanning my rhythm, I scan through each measure and I count the measures that I know I'm gonna have the most trouble with. I totally agree with you. I think measure two would be trickiest for me too. So I would go through, look at it, count it, and then go back and put it in the measure. Another strategy, if you don't wanna isolate the measure, is to count the whole thing, which is what we'll do right now. So we're gonna go ahead and count this super slow to really hone in on that rhythm as if we were practicing this in real time. So I will count it on a neutral syllable really slow. If you wanna follow along with me and count in your own time, you can, but I'm gonna count it out loud for everyone so we kinda can hone in on that rhythm. So. One, two, three, four, five, six. Holding that last dotted quarter for a full three beats, right? So now that we've just counted that rhythm, is that rhythm feeling a little bit better? I think my best advice for rhythm is to just count it super slow. Count it before you apply melody to it. The smaller you can break things down, the better. Feel a little bit better? Okay, so next thing is melody, which is where I have little brackets highlighted here that I really wanna talk about. The E natural, absolutely. So you'll notice between measures one and two, we have our first accidental. We have F to E natural to F. So I'm gonna play that for you. F to E natural to F. If I just isolate that and play that F to E natural to F to you on its own, what motor key do you think that most sounds like? Do you think that sounds like F minor? Or does that sound like, if I were to just play? What does that remind you of? We know it's F minor because we have the key signature for us and we already analyzed that part in our formula. What does it sound like? What do you think? Does it remind anyone of a certain major key? Yes, F major, absolutely. Yes, thank you. Yes, F major, right? So we know what F major sounds like. We know. So if we go ahead and apply that same principle, although we're working in a minor scale, our approach will be a lot, a lot simpler. So. That is, I just played measures one to two. So let's go ahead and sing that together. That is what we're looking for, that E natural. If we had E flat, it would sound a lot different. The distance would be a lot greater than that E natural. So keep that in mind. The B flat to G jump, as I have highlighted in the purple. Thank you for mentioning that earlier. Absolutely. A really tricky one, right? B flat, G, A flat, not natural. B flat, G, A flat. I wanna ask you, what do we think that sounds like? Kinda sounds like, what major key does that sound like if I were to just isolate that? What do we think? To me, it sounds like A flat is my tonic, right? So if I go ahead and, when I'm singing it, think of it as such or look at it from this lens, it's gonna help me to find that placement pitch wise. So we just did measure one with our E natural. We just discussed our B flat to G leap. And then we have another leap with D flat to B natural. D flat, B, C. With the B to C specifically, what major scale has B natural to C? One is probably pretty familiar. No sharps, no flats. That would definitely have B natural to C. C major, yes. Internalize that, use that knowledge to apply that to this accidental. And then lastly, we have our E natural again. Another application of F major. Same exact thing. So with that in mind, I would love us to go back and we are going to sing the whole thing through. I will demonstrate on a do based minor this time around so we can really hear those distances. But I really want us to think about those four places in the melody. First one in the blue as a reminder. If you're using solfège, or if you're using la based minor, that B flat to G to A. And then we have our D flat to B. If you're using la based minor. If you're using a do based minor. Sounds like F major. C, la, la based minor. So now that we've kinda gone through and listened to those, let's sing the whole thing again. Here's your starting pitch. I'm gonna count everyone in. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, now that we've gone through our second run through, how are we feeling? Did I feel a little bit better? Are there some intervals I can go back and clarify or repeat for you? How did analyzing those intervals feel? What are we thinking? You can answer in the chat. What do you think? You can answer in the chat, what do you think? Little bit better? Personally, I know going through and realizing the distance between the two helps me tremendously. I really like, I like to think of things as if it's like a step, a skip or a leap, and that helps me a lot. So really thinking about the mode and how it functions in the example as a whole helps me a lot. So, you, after going through this, I hope it feels a little bit better that second time around, but you might be going, Ariana, I do not have time to analyze this whole example. You're gonna be like, I have 75 seconds, we talked about this, I don't have time to analyze the whole thing. Yes, I agree with you. However, I think it's important to look at these from a different lens, because the more you recognize and identify these patterns now, the easier they'll become when you see them. So when you go into exam day and you see these accidentals, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna look as intimidating and be, where are these accidentals coming from? I have no idea. How am I supposed to find that pitch? But, the more you get practice with seeing these patterns that are commonly in the AP exam from a different lens, the easier they're gonna become. And we just did that with our scale degree seven and our scale degree four. So, any questions about this example? Would anyone like to run through it one more time to get a feel for it? I didn't run it in la based minor, so would anyone like me to run it in la based minor to hear it for them? Yes? Absolutely, we can sure sing it in la based. Thank you for asking, of course. I totally understand that everyone is working in a, in a different mode in medium, so absolutely. So, everyone at home, if you would like to sing it on a do based minor or a neutral syllable, go ahead and keep doing that. I'm gonna sing it in a la based minor. And watch out for those accidentals. If this is your third run through and you're really feeling good about it, start thinking about the details this run through. Forte, so really sing it with your fullest confidence. Here we go. How does that feel a little bit better? Anything I can clarify for you on our la based? Yes, awesome, good, I'm so glad. Oh yay, I'm so glad. It feels good when you're like, yes, I got it. Yes, I totally understand, everyone has a different medium of what they hear best, and that is totally okay. It is okay to hear things in a, in a different way, and I totally understand that. So if I can demonstrate any certain one again for you in a certain way, just let me know. But really nice job with that first example. Let's take a look at our second one. So, example two. We are working in bass clef this time around. So, this time, I'm going to give everyone a little bit less time to look at it, now that we've implemented our strategy. I'm gonna give everyone a minute and a half. So, I'm gonna give everyone one minute and 30 seconds, and I'm gonna tell you when the 75 seconds are up, I'm gonna kind of narrate where you should be as we go throughout the formula. If you want to listen to what I do, go for it. If you're like, Ariana, I'm gonna use the formula my own way, totally okay with me too, but I'm just gonna guide you along this one. So your one minute and 30 seconds. A little hint about the key there. Your one minute and 30 seconds starts now. Looking at our key here. Next, I'm scanning my rhythm. Now, I'm taking those 40 seconds to look at my melody. Now I'm taking a look at my details, looking at dynamic markings. And we are now at our 75 second mark. So take these, this extra time to look over anything you need to. Alrighty, okay, here we go. Here's our starting note. If you would like to arpeggiate, that helps too. I'm gonna demonstrate on a neutral syllable, and then I'll go right into solfège after, after we repeat. Here we go. One, two, three, four. Okay, um, let's do it on solfège one more time. Super slow motion, so we kind of get a feel for it from our solfège singers at home, and then we'll break it down. Here we go. Okay, how did that one go? Our solfège version and our non-solfège version, what do we think? Feel a little bit, did that second one feel a little bit better than the first one, or? Let me see. Pretty well with solfège. Awesome, good, great, great, great. So good to hear. Awesome, awesome. Okay, let's break this down a little bit. So, key, our lighthouses, we have B flat, both are starting and ending pitch, and you'll notice we have a scale degree four raised, we have that E flat raised, but we're not in a minor mode, we're in a major mode. So, like I was saying earlier, we don't automatically correlate accidentals with minor, so important to keep in mind, you're in B flat major. Check. Next, I'm gonna take a look at our rhythm. We are in four-four time here, but we do have some different rhythmic functionalities happening. We got that dotted rhythm going on, our dotted eighth to sixteenth to really watch out for. We have two sixteenths and an eighth in measure three. So really important to keep in mind. So, let's count out that rhythm together. I'll count it out on a neutral syllable. You can count along with me at home, using whatever you would like, but let's count that one out so we get a feel for it. One, two, three, and four. So, notice those dotted quarters, those half notes. I'm holding them and extending them for my fullest rhythmic value that I possibly can. You want to hold space for the full value that each beat holds. Next, let's break down that melody. So, where are some trouble spots for everyone? I am gonna highlight specifically where that accidental is, but I would love to hear from you all, was there a certain measure or spot, you're like, oh, I don't know, that part was a little bit tricky? Or we could just jump right into measure two? Yes. Accidental fa to re, yeah, a really tricky one. What's, we'll talk about that one. Absolutely. So, yes, that's a measure three, so we won't get to that one. So, we have in the beginning. Really thinking about arpeggiation here, and then stepwise motion. This next measure, we have. If I just isolate that measure, and I have B flat, C, D, natural F. What does that sound like to you? Or if you were just going to look at a scale, just the second half of a scale and have B flat to F? What would that look like? What do we think? What kind of scale would have just B flat to F, disregarding key signature at the moment? But what kind of scale would have B flat and then end on an F? What major mode do we think? Potentially F major? Perhaps, right? If I were to put new solfège, that. Sounds a lot like F major there. So, instead of thinking that, that E natural is a bigger jump than I needed to be, I'm gonna go ahead and think of that next system as an F major scale. So, approaching that accidental isn't gonna be scary. So, let's just sing, let's sing those first two measures together. Here's our starting note, I'll sing it on solfège. One, two, and three, and four. Solfège for scale degree four raised to sol. That's the difference between the two. So that's one we have to watch out for, thinking about the F major scale there, and looking at it from a different lens to better understand if scale degree four comes our way raised, we know how to tackle it. Let's talk about. That's measure three. Then we have that fa to re jump, like was mentioned. Absolutely. For intervals like this that are a little tricky, because we talked about earlier, when we were discussing things about sightseeing that are kind of scary and we're uncertain about, we talked about how arpeggiation, other than 1, 3, 5, can be kind of tricky, right? We talked about how they really can be kind of intimidating, could be like, how to approach those, how to internalize them. For this, this is where all that good interval practice is gonna come in. So, we're gonna talk about. If I go C to E flat, that would be a minor third. But if I go from E flat to C, that distance, that's something to think about for sure. C is in the key of E flat major, so it would be major. So I want you to think about quality and interval space. Another way to think about it is we have me that comes right after it. Think about fa, mi, we have to have something go before it to get to the me. So thinking about what comes before and after helps quite a bit too. So, for those leaps, really thinking about intervals will help so, so much. So, let's isolate that measure and sing it together. So we start on. Hopefully that helps a little bit more with that fa to re jump. And then we have our, we go right back to re, re, and we have sol, do, five, one. To finish out our example. So, any other spots I can clarify for you before we go ahead and sing through the whole thing one more time? Any other like, oh, can we go back and do a certain leap? We go back and do a certain measure, or you can sing the whole thing through just to get that idea in our brains? Nope? Alrighty, let's sing this through one more time. I'll sing it on a neutral syllable this time. Really thinking about measure two and how we're raising that scale degree four. Here we go. Okay, feel a little bit better about that one? Any additional questions or things I can clarify for you in this example? Feeling good? Little bit better? Greaty. Okay, I'm going to move on to our last example for the day before we get to some questions. This one, I want to quickly, we're gonna run through it once or twice, and I'm gonna give you the full 75 seconds. We're not gonna analyze this one, we're just gonna put into practice. Let's see. Do they give arpeggios on the exam? Question. Arpeggios are definitely, if you mean like arpeggiation in regards to like your starting pitch, I believe you just get your starting pitch. Can you clarify that with your teacher? But I believe it's just the starting pitch. If you want to sing the arpeggio first yourself, I would highly recommend it, and I'll demonstrate that for you here. But arpeggios in the examples, absolutely. Mostly diatonic, 1, 3, 5, 5, 7, 2, that kind of thing, definitely watch out for, for sure. I believe that answers your question. So, I'm gonna start the clock for 75 seconds. And I'm not gonna narrate our steps this time, I'm gonna let you look on your own time following the formula we discussed. And your starting pitch is here. Minor, that's a little hint. Here we go, your 75 second starts now. You have about 30 seconds left. Here's your starting note, 30 seconds. Alrighty, so for the sake of time, I'm gonna sing it once in a do based minor, and then I'm gonna sing it once in a la based minor. So follow along with me in whatever method works best for you at home. Here we go, here's our starting note, our arpeggiation is here for an example. Here we go. Do based minor will be first. One, two, three, four, five. How'd we do, before you were la-based minor, okay? Yes, no, maybe? Give our D sharp that we're going to watch for in our second go-around. Here we go. Here's our starting note, la-based minor this time, take your time. And that's our la-based minor one, how did that feel, a little bit better? How do we know if it's a minor or major? Great question. Using those lighthouses, our starting and ending pitch, and if applicable, using accentals. Oh, it went really well, I'm so glad, that's great to hear, awesome, okay. I'm going to briefly wrap up with a quick quote. I want to leave you with, this is by David Hughes, I believe he's a saxophone player, correct me if I'm wrong, if you know something about him, please enlighten me on that, but he said, sight-reading is as much an attitude as it is a skill. Super important. Like I was saying before, you all showed up to this class today on your own time, you're dedicated students, you're dedicated musicians. That's why you enrolled in this course, so let that truly shine. I really truly believe your mindset is the essential key to really showing your strengths on this portion of the exam, so go ahead and really showcase that. So, really show the strong musician you are, and really just go into it with a positive frame of mind, and you'll be successful. You know, you're all great musicians, you're all smart students, that's why you're here, so really show that to your listeners. So thank you guys so much for being with me, I have a little bit of time to answer. Yes, okay, I'm going to answer a few quick questions really quickly. Oh, and then Cora is so awesome, I sent a few resources you guys' way about my favorite things to use to prepare for your training for the exam, so thank you to Cora. She put those all there, so go ahead and open up those hyperlinks and open them up in your tabs. And I'm going to answer these questions. So, I also struggle with a lot with harmonic dictations, do you have any tips or future workshops on this? Great question, harmonic dictation is definitely one that I love to work on with my students too. It's definitely one where it's a lot of listening and ear training, so if you would like to chat about that further, please shoot me a message on my tutoring profile. Same with melodic dictation, I just got a question about tips for melodic dictation. Practice, practice, practice using our ear training skills and identifying those key patterns. If you want to chat with me, my tutoring profile will be linked here. I think it's wisn/tre/achievewitharianna, feel free to shoot me a message, I'd love to chat about it. I don't have any future workshops about, on this as of yet. But, yeah, feel free to send me a message about this, but tips, really, trust your instincts, that's what I love to tell my students, for both harmonic and melodic dictation, trust your instincts, trust your ears, and break down whatever you can, and as many places as you can, I hope that helps. Any additional questions, anything I missed? Okay, Cora's awesome, okay. We'll be emailing a copy of these videos next week, and these will also be on YouTube as well. So yes, that is, if anyone doesn't have any additional questions at the moment, thank you guys so much for being here today, it was really nice to meet all of you. You're all going to be so wonderful on the exam, thank you. If you would like to chat with me, shoot me a message on my tutoring profile, if you'd like to book an additional session. I tutor in theory analysis, I love Raminu analysis, my students know that, and I love dictation, harmonic dictation, so send me a message, I'd love to work with you. Thank you all so much, bye.